Okay, the board is back from our exercise here to share our priorities. And Mr. Schultz is going to go over what we've come up with on the diagram.
Okay, thank you for engaging in that activity. So we've had some shifts of the initial priorities, looking at the sequencing, leaving the new middle school, building that out at number one. Arbrown-McAllister in the second sequence order. And then shifting the initial sequence that they had, making it the third spot Northwest Cabarrus High School replacement that would add an additional 1,800 seats. And, I'm sorry, an additional 450 seats, 800 student, 1,800 student capacity, thank you. And the fourth position then would be purchased land for Coltrane-Webb Elementary School. And the fifth order of sequence would be the Coltrane-Webb Elementary School, followed by Opportunity School in the sixth position. Then the renovation of Arbrown-McAllister for the newly renovated Mary Frances Wall. And then a renovation for Central Services Auxiliary Satellite Offices that would be located at the former Mary Frances Wall facility. And followed by the renovation of Northwest Cabarrus High School to create a new Northwest Cabarrus Middle School in the formerly Northwest, former Northwest Cabarrus High School. Followed by the renovation of Northwest Cabarrus Middle School that then becomes the Northwest Cabarrus Elementary School site. And the 11th position, Beverly Hills, that's a replacement school that includes an additional 100 seats. And then lastly, the purchase, purchase of land, it'd be land banking for a Central Cabarrus High School replacement school. So any further comments or clarifications on that sequencing order?
And I think just the clarification that these projects will somewhat run simultaneously. It'll be a matter of what stage schools are in and also always dependent on the county's ability to fund each of the projects.
Thank you. And in terms of next steps, so what I will do is I'll make sure that I will produce an electronic copy of this. Cindy and Rob, I'll run that through you initially. And then that'll be distributed to the rest of the board members so that you can have that for consideration at the business meeting on October 14th for your final approval of the sequence. Okay, any questions or comments? I really, really appreciate your engagement in this, it went really well. And thank you for thinking through this and understanding how all these facilities are connected.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. And thank you, board members. I think our little manipulatives here, as we were in a class, worked very well to come to conclusions there. So pending any adjustments next week, that is what we would present then to the county commissioners as our priorities for discussion. And speaking of county commissioners, the next item is, and this is an action item on here because we have a deadline of October 11th, which is Friday. Each year, the board is familiar with, the North Carolina School Board Association allows us to nominate for individuals or boards of commissioners for awards at our annual conference in November. We have talked for some time about nominating the commissioners for their support with the school teacher supplement, school construction, and so on. So we don't have the final document ready tonight, but I'm going to ask you to go on a moment of faith, and I will get it to you all before it's submitted. So Mr. Harrison has done an initial draft, and I've asked staff to provide information on a couple areas which I'll go over now. One is the historical growth in the teacher supplement over the last several years, the list of completed construction projects and major repairs over the last 10 years, the evolution of technology funding, so we have a guaranteed source of technology funding each year, the evolution of the buildings and grounds maintenance funding, the number of nurses and school resource officers we have at every school. That is because we are somewhat unique, I think still, Dr. Lauter, in having both of those positions at each of our schools. And the local funding support for magnet schools or academies and so on, which those are smaller amounts of money usually, but it does take money to get those programs started.
The mental health.
Oh, yes, good point.
We're one of the few districts in the state that has trainers at every school.
We're one of the few districts in the state that has trainers at our high schools and some of our middle schools.
Oh, oh, athletic trainers.
I'm talking about athletic trainers who are well versed in concussion protocol and the hospital supports us in that way.
What's going on here, Madam Chair, is that our county commissioners appreciate a holistic view of what we're trying to do and historically have supported much of that. Maybe not all the time, but have been fairly consistent and reliable, and that's a gift.
I'm sorry, I'm writing some of your words there, Mr. Harrison. So anyway, so I will take the information, staff's going to supply to me by the end of Wednesday, what Mr. Harrison has already written up, and come up with a final document. So I will send it out to all of the board members. If you have any adjustments or whatever, I need to send it in on Friday, but I'm sure it can be at 3:00 in the afternoon on Friday. Yeah, so if you will provide your feedback or even just ideas even before I send out the draft, I would appreciate it. So what I'm really looking for tonight is if we as a board agree to nominate the commissioners so that we can attach that, that on this day, our board voted, hopefully unanimously, to support the nomination of our commissioners. So do I have a motion?
She'll move.
Mr. Harrison and Mrs. Grimsley, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. I think they will be pleased to even have been nominated. We never know what, how the voting will go or how the decisions will go by the state organization, but I think it's important to recognize, even when we want to build facilities faster, that we have received many, many of our requests over the years, including those bus cameras, sometimes Holly, that come about. So, what's that?
The official list of the articles.
Yes, yes. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is going into the consent, or potential items for the consent agenda and 7.01 and the policy revisions for approval on the first reading.
Yes, ma'am. We have two policies tonight before the board in first reading, Policy 2500. This was a board request for revision. Request a 48-hour notification for non-family witnesses or observers, friends, social workers, therapists, et cetera. Also added, board chairperson and vice-chairperson in consultation with the board attorney will determine if a meeting can and be opened session, requested by parent, et cetera. Policy 4150, school assignment, transfers and program choice enrollment. This is a district request to change. This is a request of a revision of when students can enter programs, magnets, et cetera. This will be in line with our new high school and the new programs or maintaining program capacities. And our attorney recommended minor change on page eight.
Okay, I'm going to start on 2500 just because I sent in a couple comments. So in the new section number seven, I thought the wording might have been a little repetitive. It was a little hard to get kind of get that all coordinated today over email. I'm just looking to remove any redundancies. I think the last sentence with the non-party phrasing, I just think it's awkward because I think we already said up above. So I guess I'm wondering, can we just go ahead and maybe offline, talk about that in the next day or two and see how we can improve that?
Absolutely. I sent that to Mr. Shaw. I think he had some comments. We can certainly do that between now and Monday and get it back to you, so you can see it.
Mr. Shaw, do you want to share anything about that? I know, I know what we're trying to convey, I just thought the wording could be simpler, maybe.
Sure, and this is still going to be for first reading?
Right.
Is that right? Yes, I can get on it right away. I thought you had some good points. I think we can work out some language, get it to the board, and then it always gives us another month to.
Fine tune.
Fine tune, if necessary. Hopefully it won't be necessary.
Yeah. So any other comments on 2500? Okay, the other policy is 4150. As Ms. Reimer said, that was really talking about when people can enter the different programs was the biggest change, I guess.
Yes, ma'am. On page one, we use the term generally based on program choice. Superintendent doesn't always assign the answer, they use that term. And then on page three of 10, we talk specifically about our IB and high school academies and students being able to enter the academy and where IB at a later date. In our policy previous to this, they can only enter in the ninth grade, so that is a change.
How is that going to work within this year or two of the program?
So, for example, in certain academies, you may be able to enter in the 10th grade instead of just the 9th grade if there's some certain programs or courses that you already have. Same thing, IB is going to be ran a little bit different. I can have Alan do a complete synopsis for you of Ms. Shemansky and have her send it to you, but basically, students are going to be able to enter IB, the diploma program in the 11th grade, whereas at Concord High, they're magnet students, they'll be entering in the ninth. So there's quite a bit of conversation around that and how the district's choosing to do that magnet program, but I'd really like Alan to get you the exact language.
I'd like to understand a little.
Okay, I'll have her send that this week. Any other comments on these two policies? Okay, I'm thinking because we're going to have rewording possibly, that we should probably put them, at least the first one, on action. Is that agreed?
Agreed, yeah. Let's see both of them on action.
What's that?
Let's see both of them on action.
Yeah, I mean, we can simplify that and just put them both on action. Okay, thank you. And the next item we have, I guess, Mrs. Burns, thank you, is the 2021 academic calendar.
Yes, ma'am. So our calendar committee has met to discuss the 2021 calendar as well as our early college calendar and our Wolfmeadow calendar, so we're bringing all three of those tonight. If you look at our academic calendar, you do see a couple of major changes. Mr. Walters and I think Mr. Schumaker were both part of discussions around some of those major changes, deals with the Republican National Convention and when we're actually starting school. So if you look, we're starting school, or recommending that we would start school on August 31st. The conversation was around that convention and what that would mean to our local law enforcement and the security of our schools and security of, and the things that they're going to be involved in, basically. Again, Mr. Schumaker and Mr. Walters were there, they can comment if they'd like to. So the committee listened to those conversations and agreed that a later start there would be good. We also acknowledged that this does limit our calendar a little bit in the sense of snow days and days that we had to forgive, as well as some teacher workdays. I think the committee did choose to come up with 88 student days both semesters rather than having two more workdays in the first semester. I think there's some discussion there, but overall, we realize this isn't a calendar that we would want to put out every year, but based on the situation that we're faced with, we feel like it's in the best interest of students at this point. So obviously, we'll listen to comments or suggestions from the board.
So I just thought about this, but when we had to vote to let the teachers go to Raleigh, and we talked about getting it on the calendars because it's the first day of the long session, that's why they choose that specific day. So they, what, basically, and I think Ms. Jones may even be able to speak to it a little bit, but they moved that date. There's no way to pick when they're going to, and they do that purposefully, believe it or not. So if we knew for sure that that was going to be a day, it's been different days both years.
It's a very likely case it'll happen again.
There is a possibility it could happen again, but us knowing what date that is is nearly impossible.
That was in the spring, right?
Yes, ma'am.
If it's considered May Day, which would be May 3rd, which is a Monday.
And I thought that it was the first day of the long session. That's why they choose that day, because they're back in session, it's the very first day. Is that not accurate? It's hard to say if it's accurate or not, I don't really, I do know that they have changed the date both years. It wasn't a set date. Now whether it's the first day, I don't know if anybody has it, and we can do some research on that, Ms. Blackwell, but off the top of my head, I'm not sure. I just know that they changed it and there was comments about, they didn't really want it to be titled, you know, they don't want it named before because then that doesn't have the same impact. So we can do some research. I don't know if anyone else here has any other comments about that, but.
And just to clarify, it's not a matter of whether teachers express their freedom of speech so much as coverage at the schools for the children while the classrooms are still in.
Yeah, can the district cover substitute wise? Do we have enough staffing? Do we have a safe environment for students? Yes.
I think what we did in the past was, you know, there was a day there that we could forgive, so the hours would still be there to possibly forgive, instead of trying to pinpoint a day that even if you pinpoint it, could then be changed because you pinpointed it. So I just think we would say we wouldn't recommend you do that because it's a little bit of a moving target. And you still have a provision there to forgive if that's something that you wanted to do.
But the number of days we can forgive is all dependent on the weather, if we need those days and we have sufficient hours. So what, how many days do we have for the ability to forgive it right now?
In this calendar, we have four.
Okay. So four bad weather days with no makeup if things would get bad.
That is correct.
Okay.
So in the past, we've all often talked about exams in December and not having that flag time over the Christmas holidays and then exams in January. What does this, and that was a perfect world, wasn't it? The flexibility thing we keep talking about. What does this proposal do to our wish for as well as what we actually are going to have to face?
Okay, so obviously, if you look at the calendar, you can see the blue, if you'll pull that down just a little bit, Dane. You can see where our exams are in second semester, and then I'm going to punt the second half of your question to Dr. Lauter and let him answer you.
Yes, so the other thing is to have exams before, so obviously with the convention and if we go with this calendar, it makes it a not ideal calendar. Well, the other option that you still could have is to do what now either 12 or 14 districts do, which is to say, well, we're just going to start on, in August, at the beginning of August. We're going to start at August 3rd and essentially move that back down again, if you don't mind, so you can look at where that would be. So if we started the week of August 3rd and then went to school for three weeks and then took the week off of the Republican National Convention, then that would be an option too. But you would in essence say, well, we're going to do what the other districts are doing there, we're just going to start early and go from there. So that's an option, but one that I think the board would have to be willing to say, hey, we're going to plant a flag and join the other 14 or 12 districts that have decided that they're going to go throughout the month of August. And then we could probably do exams before Christmas, and we would graduate somewhere around Memorial Day, which is what most people think is an ideal calendar and would align to early, early college in Rowan-Cabarrus.
I think this is a tough year to try to do that, though, with basically needing to take that one week off, because you're then telling teachers to come back at the end of July when they just got out, middle of June.
Yeah, as we said, I don't think any of the options you have are ideal. This is not, two full weeks of workdays is something that you're going to hear people complain about too. So again, it's just not saying that that's what you should do, it's just saying it is an option, but you would be kind of joining the group that's a little bit different. And Mr. Shaw looks like he's going to talk, and I know he represents Kannapolis, which is one of those districts that does that.
And what we don't know yet is whether it's going to be a legislative response to those 12 or 14 school districts, and we'll just see.
Last time I, yeah, caused a short, so. We don't know if there's going to be a legislative response to those 12 or 14 districts, and we will just have to see. So that's another uncertainty if you build a calendar on the early year, or early August.
We've been asking for years to see if we can adjust our calendar to what works best for us. And what works best for our students, as I understand it, is having the exams prior to the big break and coming back after Christmas and the start of a new semester and finishing early. So essentially, if you're having a shorter summer this year, you're having a longer summer next year.
Well, then you get back to normal summer, yeah.
And you said you had a discussion with the state superintendent, what did he say?
Yeah, I did. When this came up as an option, we started talking to the law enforcement about the Republican National Convention that I sent to all of our legislators and I sent to the state superintendent, hey, you know, what flexibility do we have? And they all said, oh, yeah, you've got plenty of flexibility. And then each one of them kind of consecutively said, well, we can't help you, but that one can help you. And then the next one said, well, we can't help you, but the state superintendent can help you. And then he ultimately said, no, we don't have, I mean, I met with him last week in his office, and he ultimately said, there is nothing in the waivers that gives you this possibility. So it means that you would say, well, it's all messed up, we have a really good reason, we can start August 3rd or we can start August 31st. Either one of those is doable. The August 3rd one puts you in the district league that Mr. Shaw just talked about. The August 31st one makes it a very compact calendar with not many days off in the first semester that either, neither is going to be ideal.
You could also do it, Ms. Sternbaugh suggested, start on 17, going a week and then.
Yeah, I think when the committee talked about it, and Ms. Reimer can speak of that, is if you, if you bring everybody back and they go to school for one week, now you bring everybody back and people are at work, and now do you put a burden on people for daycare for a week there? Like, my child went to school for a week and now they're off for a week. And I think we kind of landed with that may be more of a burden than it would be. But it's an option, yes.
But they have that week off anyway, either end of a break or not, still off.
Well, I think if you, if you start on the 31st, what you in essence say to parents is you've got another week of summer, right? You go all the way through and I have longer through August. If you bring them back the 17th, then you say, start, start your kids there and then figure out something for the last week of August and then come back again. And so again, I know that was discussed, none are ideal, but it is an option.
And if you start on the 3rd, you're aligning yourself with a community college that we have several students that go.
Yeah, early college starts on the 5th, so if you started that week of the 3rd or the 5th, then you would in essence align with the community college calendar, which is what, if you ask us our ideal calendar, that's what we would like to do. It's most of the feedback that we've gotten back, and it lines up high school students with community college who are on career and college promise and all this, the stuff that they do. So we certainly like the idea of lining up those calendars, but it does put you in this category we discussed.
So I have a quick question. So I've had a couple questions from parents about why is there no fall break anymore? And I know they had fall break when I was on the board to begin with, but I can, I mean, I can tell why this one is for sure, but the calendar year we're in this year, they have not gotten a fall break. What happened to that timeframe?
So because of the calendar law that says you can't start school before the Monday closest to the 26th, and you have to finish school no later, or no sooner than the 11th of June, or the 10th of June closest to, right? There's not enough days in those calendars. And there's certain years that it works out a little bit better than it does in other years, but the last two to three at least have been so tight that there's no flexibility. And so a lot of people really complain about the calendars a lot, but when you sit down and get a group of people together and you start looking at, and Mr. Walters and Mr. Schumaker can speak to this, when you really start looking at what true flexibility you have within the parameters, knowing that teachers have to work 215 days and kids have to have a certain number of days and hours, there's very little flexibility. And so you try to place your teacher workdays in situations where it's beneficial for teacher and parent conferences and teachers to have professional development, and also making sure that you have something in the calendar that if you have bad snow, that you're not going to absolutely mess up a high school student's exams and/or AP. I mean, there's just so much there that the flexibility is very limited. Again, it's based on when we have to start and when we have to finish.
And Mrs. Grimsley? So you're right, the first and maybe the second year you were on the board, we did have complete control of the calendar, and we were finishing before Christmas break. We were finishing, we had plenty of days to work with, but we don't have that option, so.
So my question is, is this more of state guidelines, not federal? I'm assuming that's correct, because I know other states that do not follow this. And also, if we did start earlier, would that allow us some time in October to give people, I think that, that fall break time gave them some time, you know, there's just such a long stretch that they don't get anything. I think that kind of made sense. Would that be more feasible?
Can we see an option that has that fall break and starting earlier?
Yes, we can, we can certainly create one. I would, I would encourage, you know, we can do that and try to get it to you as soon as possible. I would encourage us that we really need to pass a calendar as soon as possible to notify families in general. I don't have that option in front of me right now, but I can certainly work on it the next day.
Well, Mr. Walter, I'll just remind you that when I was asking about having a teacher workday, that was in essence to give a long weekend, so it wasn't a, it's not a week, it's at most like a four-day weekend, a three or four-day weekend, but it was a nice break. Because I know when my kids were young, that we always went to the beach that weekend. It was just a nice getaway for, they were out of school. But it does get very complicated, so.
But if there's a fall break, then that would mandate coming back August 3rd. So you're going to have to kind of commit to, yeah, we'll start that first early weekend in August. And then Ms. Reimer and the group can kind of work with how that would happen, but that would again, kind of put you in this 12 district group that you just guys have to make sure you want to be in that group.
Right. So what are those other districts? Are they our size?
They're mostly small districts, so the ones around us, Kannapolis does it, Mooresville does it, Iredale Statesville does it, Mount Airy, Surrey, Lincoln County is another one that's near us that does it. So we would be the largest, I think. None of the large 12 districts that we're in that group of, none of them do that. So the largest of those, I just said, is probably Iredale, which is about 20,000 students, but we would be the largest if we joined that group.
So I personally think this is not one of those times we want to be the exception. I think it would draw too much negative attention, especially when Dr. Lauter had emailed our legislative delegation, and they were not willing to kind of go out on a limb and push for that week of waiver for us, for the convention. So I think we would almost be, at that point, be going against the opinion that has already been given to us. That concerns me a great deal.
And we're here to do what's best for kids, and if it's best for kids to have a full 180 days and get out early and have the test, then I'm for that.
It is. I just, I think we look at it for the 2021, 22 year because we already lose this week regardless. That week is gone for the convention for safety reasons, so.
Right. And if you remember, at our District 6 meeting, we were cautioned that the legislature is still what? In session. So bring a lot of attention to yourselves, go ahead and thumb your nose and start August 3rd and, and see what the response will be next year and will we be told that our calendar is out of line, and they will definitely pass something more than likely. Charlotte Meck voted on their calendar back in the spring, and they are starting on the 31st, and same with Union County, so. Oh, they haven't, but, yeah, that was what I got from them as well. And basically, this is a generational thing. It doesn't, you know, you don't get these events very often, and I think it's, it's just one of those things, we have to suck it up. I think we added a little bit of time to the day to help out with the hours, didn't you? Couple minutes?
Not to this calendar. We did do that this past school year when we were hit with the hurricane at the beginning in fear of not having any more forgive days, but certainly up to the board if that was something they chose to do.
Yeah. So I think you've generated enough flexibility in the calendar, in the calendar, that if, you know, we have to have something emergency-wise, then we've got it. Unfortunately, I don't like it. I wish we could start earlier in August, but our legislatures do not want to support us in that.
Let me add just a little bit more on that. It's been a big debate, and School Board Association strongly favors local accountability. I think the local boards are the closest to be able to decide what's best for kids. But General Assembly is quite clear. to be able to decide what's best for kids. But General Assembly is quite clear that those board, that board's discretion should be removed, basically to help the tourism industry. And that's just a judgment call of the General Assembly. And most educators I know disagree with that, saying whatever date it is, it should be the local board's decision. But there is a calendar law. Now, these 12 or 14 school districts are basically just, they're disregarding that law, but they're making the claim, the argument that it's really a year-round school. Because year-round schools are exceptions to the calendar law. So then the question is, what's a year-round school? And turns out, there's no definition. So it gives the local boards some ability to argue that they have year-round schools. But generally, it's more like summer programs, reading, reading recovery programs, things like that, rather than what most people think of as a true year-round school. So there's some legal risk in it, and we don't know what the General Assembly will do, if anything. And the General Assembly could just say, here's a very clear definition of year-round school, and you have to, you have to apply to, apply these standards. And we just don't know. So when you have what's best for kids versus state law, we're kind of stuck on that.
Yeah, but the state law also says we're supposed to start on the, well, closest Tuesday to the 26th, which is the 24th. So what if we stayed in school and didn't take that week off? Then that's an issue with the sheriff's department, right?
Yeah, but we, we know what the argument is, is that the schools could be possibly set up as deterrents, or not deterrents, as actually activity areas for protesters to create havoc and also push police resources into different areas while something else is going along, along down in, in Charlotte. Plus, there'll be activities all around, even here. We know that we've had activities at this convention center right behind us, and I don't think I want to subject our students to people who have not the purest motives, whoever they may be. And I just, I think that the sheriff's department said that they would support us in whatever we did, but they would really want us to help them out and not have the schools as a possible source of mischief for people who want to create mischief and havoc. And there's plenty of those types of folks out there, and there's no, no need for us to do that to our students. And if, if that should happen and we did keep our schools open, I know none of us would, would ever want to try to, we, we would have really know that we made a horrible decision. And I just don't think we should put ourselves in that type of position.
And I think it's important to remember that, and we talked about this string redistricting, that our schools travel on the roads around Concord Mills and Speedway and whatnot. So they're in the heavily populated hotel areas. There's going to be excess traffic. I think it's best if we're just not subjecting our bus drivers and, and the students and the teachers from all that traffic and extra folks who are going to be in our county. But we welcome all the visitors to spend their money here so we can achieve the taxes and feed that into the county's coffers to support us.
I think, I think my point was, we're still violating the law by changing our start date.
I think the law, and I can pull it and show it to you, it's, you ha, you can't start before the Monday closest. Doesn't say you can't start after. I think, yeah. So you can't start before the Monday closest.
You can't start before, okay.
The Monday closest to the 26th. So you can start after the Monday closest.
But we're still losing student days that we would have had otherwise.
Actually, we're pretty close to what we have this year.
We have 180 days.
Well, we, hours-wise, we have very similar.
Days-wise, though, what days?
No, they're very similar. Probably 17, I, I, hang on, I've got it, I've got it.
176, so there's four, four classroom days that we don't, that we lose.
But you picked up your hours, you got 30-plus hours, I believe, right there.
So my children are grown, but if I had small children, I would be grateful to get out of town the last full week of August. And as hot as this September has been this year, it might also be a blessing. And the traffic and congestion from the Republican National Convention is going to be a challenge regionally. And as we've started out with our, our SROs and our police presence, our, need to be a, a strong element of, of that security. So, Madam Chair, do we have a consensus to accept this calendar as it's proposed, or what changes? I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a handle on what our current thinking is.
It will be, it will be on the agenda next week as an action item. Okay, we also have the, if you will, real quick, the early college academic calendar. It is similar, but not exact, to the RCC calendar, just due to a couple of things that, that our students need versus RCCC, but very similar to their calendar this year, and very similar to the calendar that Dr. Ladder described. We'd love to be able to eventually do.
RCC is not, is not closing for the RNC.
That is correct. At this point, at this point.
So we're staying open as well?
At this point, my, our understanding is that RCCC has made no decision to close school that week. They also don't use our sheriff's department and/or city SROs.
So we did, again, they struggled a little bit with, do we want to force our early college students to miss a week of college classes? We didn't really like that. And so it kind of went back and forth with, well, can they go to school that week if everybody else is going to be out? And, you know, primarily, our concerns are the, the Concord Mills side and the, that area. So I think, we think, and kind of talk to the principals too, that can, can early college go to school? And we think, yes, they can, and it not be a major disruption, because we're just, we're scared that if we forced them to miss a week of college classes, that was going to be bad. If for some reason there's massive civil unrest or something that would be, then we can always cancel that and figure out how to make up the time. But I think our recommendation now is to say, early college can go. It's, it's not that many students, it's a minimal amount, and we think we can do that and avoid any kind of issues around that. But it is a little different for those two schools. That's our recommendation.
Board members, any questions? Are we good with this one? Okay. And then Wolfmeadow? Yes, ma'am. Wolfmeadow was able to manipulate their calendar to also be off the week of the national convention. But again, very similar. They are a balanced calendar, so they are year-round, and very similar to the calendar they had this year, except for that week, and they had to manipulate a few days. But more of a nine-three kind of rotation. Any questions? That one makes sense. So those will be on the action agenda next week. Thank you, Ms. Reimer. Next, we have Agenda Item 7.03, and Dr. Mary Beth Roth, Sarah Reeves, and Mr. Albert are level directors to talk about school improvement plans.
Good evening. I'm going to represent all of the directors. As you are aware, the school improvement plans have been provided for you for your review over the past two weeks, along with general information about the school improvement process. We'd like to say thank you to our schools for all their hard work with the plans. Do you have any questions?
I'm just going to say I don't like the new tool. We're all getting used to the new tool.
Yeah. It's hard to kind of get your head around where to look for things, not to mention the individual logins. That's absurd for boards to have to do.
Yes, and I think we're going to convey that to the state.
Yeah.
Give them our feedback.
It, it may be okay if you have five schools, but not when you're looking at 40 of them.
Right.
Yeah.
Some appear to be filled out a whole lot more than others, or some of these schools using this tool before, or is this first year for everybody? What's the?
This, the restart schools have been using it for the last several years, and so they're very familiar with it, so they're a little bit more detailed. All the other schools in the district, this is the first year that they've used it. So as we move through the process, we'll be giving those schools feedback to help them improve their, their use of it.
Yeah, so there wasn't like a history of a two-year history or something that was in those?
No.
So how beneficial is that plan going to be for two years? You won't have that track record if it doesn't transfer?
No, it's on paper. Yes, you're right.
Board members, any other questions or comments? I hope everybody will take time to at least go over a few of them and become familiar with it over the next week. And Kate, are you on your school improvement team? How did you find the tool?
Um, I don't, we didn't.
You can get the mic.
We vote on that as a team and talk about it and discuss it based on our growth and our goals for the year. We don't enter in the data.
Typically, the school improvement team chairperson is responsible for entering.
Entering everything.
Information.
Board members, any questions for Dr. Roth? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We have a request under Agenda Item 7.04 for Mrs. Carpenter with her certificate for training that she attended with the North Carolina Association of School Resource Officers. So I'm thinking we can actually put this on consent, if you all agree with that. I don't even know how much we have on consent.
Can we wait until she's here so she can talk to us about it?
Um, I don't know that we need to get a report. We can ask her for some documentation, or we can put it on. What's the board's pleasure?
I mean, I'd like to kind of hear what she, what was, what happened at the conference. That's her opportunity to share that with us.
Mindy, I don't think we even have anything on consent at this point, do we? Because we don't have the policies. Yeah, so leave it on action. So Kelly, we don't need to do any budget amendments next week?
We don't have budgets.
Oh, so you, okay, so you, not even for local or federal? Okay. Okey-dokey.
We don't have a line.
But when we do, board members, be prepared. Okay, so we'll leave 7.04 on action. And then we have 7.05, the voting delegates for the North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference, and the delegate assembly is on Monday afternoon. So we have five spots, is that correct?
Four.
We have four.
Yes, ma'am.
I see that on here now. Okay, so going on Monday, I am going myself, I know Barry will be there. David, you're there. Robbie, you're there Tuesday, right?
I'm there Monday.
Holly, you're there Monday? And Carolyn?
I'm Monday.
You're Monday too, Laura?
Yes.
Okay, so we have six people who are potentially there. I'll just say, I would like to vote as one of the voting delegates.
I'd like to.
Is there anybody who doesn't have a preference? I think Barry, you need to, because you're an officer.
Well, I don't know if I need to.
But you're the most informed, probably.
I don't know what they're going to be voting for.
Carolyn's on here, she's watching.
I'm fine with not voting, it's okay.
It doesn't matter. I can be an alternate. How many, we got five going?
One, two, three. Okay, that's, that solves it. And if, if Holly's okay with not voting?
Hi, perfectly.
Okay. Do you want your paddle to vote?
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm a paddle's not really good.
Yeah. What's that?
Good opportunity for you to participate.
It's a good opportunity to, to get a word with you.
Okay, so we will put on the list then Cindy Barry, David, and Laura as the voting members. Does that sound right?
Sure.
Carolyn will be the alternate.
She's not here. Sorry.
Well, it just, we have to narrow it down somehow.
It's easy to lose.
So if any one of us cannot be there at that time for whatever reason, Carolyn will vote. Okay. Then we have the operational cost savings. So one more big topic. So, Ms. Klutz?
Sure. So Mr. Hughes is going to run the Excel spreadsheet for us. You have the PDF version in Board Docs. And so what we're going to try to do is finalize the work that we started in June, July, and in August is when Mr. Schumaker presented his spreadsheet. I think we had a lot of consensus on the information that Mr. Schumaker put on the spreadsheet, and since then, we were directed to go back, you know, confirm some things, make some tweaks, and then come back to you guys. And so that's what we have done with the document in front of you. There were a couple of suggestions that were, would not work, or we couldn't get as much as we originally had planned in the spreadsheet. So this is where we ended up. So that would be three teaching positions, and those were growth positions. They would not, no one would lose a position, lose their job, as a growth in the future. Two clerical custodial positions, same thing. No one loses their job, it's just growth positions.
As we're going down, can we highlight, I wanted to just explain, so I had asked previously if we could get staff concurrence on what they agreed to. So everything that says administrative acceptance?
Yes.
The district senior staff has agreed, yes, they can do those. But the items that we know are confirmed.
Okay.
Can we highlight those or do something in those cells?
So A and B, I mean, those are confirmed. I would call those confirmed. So the item C is an insurance item, 14,890 reduction. So staff is still working through that, and that will take some time just to look at our insurance policies and that type thing. We feel comfortable that we can obtain that number, but I would just kind of do a clause and say that any, to any numbers that we put in front of you, budget or generally estimates, and things do happen through the year. And so they may be a little bit one way or a little bit the other way. But, you know, 14,890 is a number that we feel comfortable with, and we feel like we can make adjustments to our policies to reflect. So is that one confirmed? No, you might, you know, put that in a different color or note there. Insurance, and I'm sorry, instructional supply materials, that's kind of a solid number. There's, part of that is a growth number. But then the, the actual cut to the schools would be, I was able to provide Ms. Furtinbaugh this information earlier in the day, but I know you guys probably haven't had an opportunity to have it. So the high, the highest cut with that per school would be the Cox, a Cox Mill High School, because they have the most students, and we allocate based on students, obviously. So that's nearly seven, or about $7,000 cut there. The lowest per pupil, the lowest cut would be Performance Learning Center at like $383. So on average, you're looking at a cut per school at about $3,000, low being 383, high being $7,000.
And that was what, a 3%?
Yeah, about 3%, mm-hmm. Yep. Three, $3.65 per pupil, and we normally allocate about $106.40 per pupil. So that's where that would be. So I think you could count that as, you know, confirmed. Transportation expense, so the proposal that came back from the Transportation Department was to increase our reimbursement for activity bus usage from $1 to $1.25. And so as long as the board is okay with that adjustment, we could, that's a confirmed amount. Okay. The next one would be staff development. That's one of the items we, we reduced a little bit. The amount was originally higher, but when we went back and looked at the staff development, staff development has been cut by the state completely years ago, and we don't get any staff development at all. So when we looked at that, we felt like we could give, we could do without the 25,000 and make that work. So that's a confirmed number. Next is our legal expenses of 37,975. I wouldn't call that one confirmed yet. We have some ideas. We'll need board participation in that, and we'll need staff participation in that. And so, you know, it's, it's hard. Mr. Shaw has provided some ideas and opportunities, but it's, any, you know, your legal bill is, is kind of a moving target, right, based on what happens in the year.
And board members, I received the email from Mr. Shaw's office 30 minutes before the meeting. I'll send that out to you all, maybe even before I leave here tonight.
Let me just add, legal fees are largely reactive. It, if, we are asked to provide services on certain matters, and we never know what that's going to be. But I'm quite confident that if we have the same general amount of volume of legal services requests, that we can pull out a $37,000 savings, knowing what, you're just monitoring it, being very efficient. just monitoring it, being very efficient, keeping that target in mind. But it's also important for the board and administration to keep that in mind, that if they want to reduce legal fees, then don't ask the attorneys to do as much. So it's, it's a combination. It's a partnership there, and it's a thing we can work at, but it's not only, something the only, within the, only the attorneys can do.
We're just catching up with the coloring. So we'll leave legal white, the color that it is.
But I do think that's a good number for budgeting purposes.
Good number.
I think it's good enough for the board to move ahead on. We just have to monitor it as it goes.
Okay. The next one is utilities, and truly, at the end of the day, I had to have a plug number. The utility budget, I'm sorry, it's the truth.
You had to have what?
I had to have a plug number, right? We were down to the, we were close, right? And Mr. Walter mentioned the utilities budget a couple of times, and so that budget is...
Thank you for moving 1.33%. I mean, it was wonderful.
Well, you know, do my part. So we were able to just kind of fill that hole there. And then the, the final number on the document is board expenses of $32,101, and that is made up, you can see at the bottom.
Letter I.
Yeah.
Good job.
I, you can consist of the following, the video recording, the reducing the meals, and reducing workshop expenses for the board.
Can I ask a question on that? So like mileage reimbursement? I mean, we could save money if we didn't request mileage reimbursement, right?
So that, all of that would come out of your workshop expenses? So that's that $15,000 that, that's noted there.
How much do we, like, on average?
So the reason I chose $15,000 is because you, you have budgeted about $30,000 annually.
And we don't use it.
And you haven't been using it. You haven't been spending it. So I feel like that $15,000 cut in your staff development, you could do pretty easily.
Yeah, so it seemed like there, it was $20,000 at one point some years ago? And we were teetering and getting pretty close to it? Yeah. Well, the other thing, and I'll have to make sure and talk to Mrs. Carpenter too, is if we're going to cut that out of our budget, it is extremely important that there is, nobody pays any registration fees, anything ahead of time, it has to go through the approval process, or it will not be reimbursed.
And that's not...
Huh? Yeah. It just has to be, because we're going to have to start monitoring. I mean, we monitored years ago, and then we kind of got away from that because it wasn't excessive. But now we're going to have to just be really careful that we stay within that 15. Yeah.
Okay, and so if, if the board is okay with the, everything that's listed, we can, we can call this done.
Can I please...
Yeah, those aren't, those aren't confirmed, Dan. You can't color those.
What is this? Reduced video recordings by $12,000. How is that going to happen?
That's part of the $32,101 on that. Those were the ideas that were tossed out. So that's what we need to agree on or not.
Okay. They're cutting the fees by $12,000? Is that what they're doing?
Is what? Yeah, half of the year. That's, or that's one meeting, one time a month.
So what does that mean? They're not filming or they're, they're just cutting their, they're cutting their expenses?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that was on the docket to say not filming.
Okay, well, I completely disagree with not filming the meetings, so...
Well, that's just, that's the work session. So if you guys want to take that out, we need to find it somewhere else if we're going to take out that reduction. So where else would you suggest?
I have no idea. Apparently you can take it out of technology is what earlier suggestions was?
No, you know, you can't do that. That's committed lease money.
Okay. Well, I'm sure we can find the $12,000.
While that thought is being considered, can I ask for clarification on the instructional materials? I thought I heard you say the Department of Motor Vehicles. What, what are those instructional costs there? So my, my question is, will parents and families, in effect, pick up some instructional material costs? Or are we truly, are we shifting that to the families somehow? Or are we just truly not doing, or doing without that instructional material? Clarify that instructional material for 175-903, please.
So I don't, I can't see the future, so I don't know really what's going to happen. The assumption is we're going to do without. Right, we're going to do with less, with instructional supplies. So this is the budget that the schools get to operate on a daily basis. They buy software, they buy mice, they buy, you know, light bulbs, they buy, well, not light bulbs, paper.
Paper.
But, but so in the real world, it might actually, actually be shifted to the PTA, PTOs, the boosters, and the, the need might still be there? Is that, I'm just asking for clarification.
I am guessing personally, if there's less paper in the building, less will be used. You know, if you look at, can each school do without a certain amount of, you know, the boxes and rings of paper? I mean, I, I think that's the biggest, highest cost item.
I'll just go back to our 2011, 2012 cuts, and our, our motto has always been, cut things and not people. And so this kind of just goes right along. And I mean, and that was echoed for year after year after year when we were making cuts. So while it's going to, any cut to this budget, to an education budget, is difficult. It's going to be difficult. It's going to hurt. But there's no way to cut this budget and not impact students and teachers. There's no way. So it's, you know, which, which cut do we want to make? And how deep do we want to go? And so back, like we said, in 11, 12, and in other years, we said things and not people, and that was just echoed by our entire staff.
Kelly, can I ask a quick question? So I was thinking at the last meeting, we talked about we would not replace positions that hadn't been filled. And I saw that we've advertised some positions for different departments, but I was a little confused. I thought we were not going to do that. If it had, if it was empty, it would remain empty.
So we hadn't made that decision. That was a topic of conversation. If you wanted to take all of this money from staffing positions, then that might be something that we would have to do. But that would be after the board had made that decision. The board had not, has not finalized the decision. And with the staffing positions that we have here, these are future positions, so that would not be required.
So for clarification, those are...
Those are growth positions.
Growth positions.
So we, we expect to have 500 or 600, and I'm trying to get away from the mic a little bit because it's loud, we'll have 500 or 600 student growth. And when you have that, the state will give you more money. They'll give you more teachers, and they'll give you more clerical and custodial. So rather than putting those positions in the school, we're going to hold that money back, and I'm going to move it out of one pot and into the other and pay supplements with it. And things are just going to get tighter in the schools, right? So the custodian and the clerical person, they have to do a little bit more, right? You just don't get the allocation that we got. Same way with teachers. So is the, is the class size, you know, three over a district the size of, of our district? You know, it's going to be difficult to see that and feel that. So that's why we think that that's a good recommendation, a good place to go.
Okay, if we can go back to the board items and just kind of get a feeling on the video recording of work sessions. Any thoughts, pros or cons?
I think we need to do it. And how you pay for it and how it's done, I don't, that's not, you know, we can figure that one out. But I definitely don't think we need to be cutting.
I mean, we're, we're down to the rubber meets the road. We need to know the money. Where's the money coming from?
Okay, well, we just had a presentation that said we added a million dollars to our fund balance. Where did that money come from? What was overspent? Take some of that, simple.
Rob, that's not overspent. I mean, Kelly has given us that description many times. When something doesn't cost as much or we have a position vacated.
Exactly, so that's going to happen again.
Think about a practical idea. I mean, you have ideas all the time. Think about a practical idea.
And I've just shared that with you.
Which one?
Where, where was, where, how did that fund, where is that million dollars? Where'd it come from? What, what did we not spend that we had budgeted? And break it down. And obviously, there's got to be something in there that's $12,000.
There's about 50,000 accounts that you'll need to assess.
You didn't provide us with 50,000 accounts to look at.
You didn't ask me to provide you with the 50,000 accounts. Therefore, I didn't provide you with 50,000.
We can use one really simple example.
So, yeah, so let me go back to that. So we get caught up in these numbers because we're a big district and we have a big budget. So I'm going to take you back to, maybe if you can get your calculator out for me. Can you do that for me?
Uh, no, just go ahead and share, share with us.
Well, I'd like to have some help. So if you take, let's just say a million dollars, right? A million dollars?
Yep.
Divided by 280 million dollars, okay? Tell me what that number is.
.00357.
Okay. So the reason I gave you those two numbers...
Three tenths, three and a half tenths of a percent.
Okay. The reason I gave you those numbers is because a million dollars is close to what we put into fund balance this year. The second number is the budget in which I manage and operate, 280 million dollars, okay? So that gets you your percent to .00357. And I want to put it back into something that we can put our arms around. So if your family budget is $100,000, I left in the bank account, in your personal bank account, at the end of a full year of operating, $357.
That's how tight she's running it.
That's how tight it is. So there's not a lot of wiggle room. The numbers are huge, the magnitude of what we deal with on a daily basis, 50,000 accounts. I can search pennies and dollars, but I can't pull big pieces for reoccurring periods. And we have uncertainties every time we turn around.
And $12,000 is a small fraction of that, so I think we can find it somewhere.
Yeah, Rob, I just want to use one example. So when we're talking about money that goes into fund balance, so the board did not spend, we only spent $12,000 to $13,000 last fiscal year out of $30,000 budget. So right there, that was money contributed to the fund balance in theory. But we're already dropping that. We're not going to have that extra again next year.
I think we all understand that. That there are, there's going to be some savings somewhere. And $12,000 out of, out of a million dollars is findable for accountability purposes. I don't think, I think that...
We just need contributions.
We need to be able to, what we do here is important to the public, and we need to be able, that needs to be able to be seen.
That's fine. I'm just saying, fine, and I agree. I mean, I think it is important to tape the meetings, but we need contributions from other people to say, where do we find that extra money?
If I may, as I recall, as one of the lines up there shows, the purpose of this is to get the teachers the other half percent. Isn't it? Isn't it?
Anyone else have ideas to find the extra? Yes, it is a small amount, but we need to commit to this. I think Kelly did a great job so far coming up with what is already shown on the board.
I'm willing to eat a pack of Nabs, you know, every, two nights a week, you know, instead of a full dinner. I mean, heaven's sake, we...
What are you saying, David?
He's talking about the workshop or the...
The providing, the reducing the meals for the board.
Which is fine.
Meeting days. I mean, I think we, we're making, we need to make sacrifices here. We wouldn't make sacrifices a few weeks ago in one fell swoop, and that's why we're having this debate about individual line items. Let's get off the pot, people. We wouldn't get off the pot a few weeks ago when we could have in one fell swoop. Let's man up or buck up, or whatever the phrase is, and make these individual hard choices, which are harder than the choice was a few weeks ago.
For the record, though, I would like to say that I think we are making a sacrifice. I mean, we're not going to take, we're, we're willing to stop the food, which is totally fine. Like, I've never thought that we should necessarily have that anyway, nor are we going to take any mileage reimbursement or any other reimbursement for anything else. So I mean...
Now, hold on, Laura. We haven't agreed to all of those.
No, 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 I know. But I'm saying, this, this whole buck up and whatever, like, I think that's a little bit rough. I mean, we are making sacrifices, obviously. To Rob's point, I totally agree. I think it's terrible that we're not going to be able to tape these episodes now for the public to be able to see.
We are unless we go against that.
Well, I know, but, but what I'm saying is, is that it doesn't have to be this. So, you know, if you're, if you're not agreeing to do this, then you're not, you're not doing your fair share. I mean, I feel like everybody's kind of sacrificing here, so...
Yeah, just, we just need another substitute idea. I'm, I'm good with removing that. I just, we just need a substitute idea.
I mean, take off all the food. That doesn't matter. Take off all the snacks. That doesn't matter.
So when I deducted, if you want all the food, you've probably got your money.
We'll take it all gone.
That's not fair for staff here.
Yeah, staff is here straight through from 7:00 AM.
I get that.
Yeah, I mean... And they're eating from our budget, so that's not fair to them.
Okay, but it's the same thing for, I mean, when I come from work, I come straight here too. So I get it. I know, it's a sacrifice.
Kelly, was there anything else? I don't have that, the information from the prior weeks. Was there anything else we, we nixed previously? Barry, anything on your sheets? You looking at?
Can you go back and talk about why, why it's only $19,000 out of a utility account when we've got almost $6 million on our utility budget?
That was...
I wasn't comfortable hitting the utility account at all. I just, I, by the time we made all those adjustments, it was only $19,000, and I thought that would be my compromise to the board and...
Yeah, and that I'm not comfortable with at all. I'm not comfortable with that number.
Right.
Because when we saw that ebb and flow over the number of years you gave us, it all balanced out, like, there's not too much in that account.
There's not.
Are we still adding the energy-efficient light bulbs and things throughout the facilities? Are we still doing that? Or are we stopping?
There's not a major initiative right now, but certainly those were done.
I mean, all that saves money, I mean...
But that's, I think that's just a, that's a continuing effort.
The, the Duke Power increases, the utility increases more than offsets what we save. So it's good that I don't generally have to, like, this year, you didn't see a line item budget for increases for just Duke Power increases because we're able to do some of those things. So they kind of offset each other.
So we are offsetting the Duke Power, Power increases?
I have been lately, yeah. Cross your fingers and knock on wood. Don't jinx me.
They're going to go up this year. You see anything, Barry?
Well, I was just looking at where the differences were.
Was it?
I was just looking at...
Oh, Holly?
I was just looking at where the differences were between the original sheet and this sheet that we have now before us, because I wrote it all down.
In the meantime, Mrs. Grimsley, is that my idea?
No, I was just going to say for Thompson. Could we just leave it for an action item for next week and let everybody think about it and finish the discussion? I don't think we're going to get anywhere tonight.
Yes, we can. I'm just concerned it's, this has gone on so many months already.
So Kelly?
Could you do .5%?
For what?
On the, on the utility budget? That would be $29,781.
She's going to have to pull it, though. We know that's not going to happen. That's really fudging numbers there.
No, it's not. I, I think, I think, but we would have to come up with the rest of it, and that would have to come out of our budget, the remainder, other $5,000.
I know what. We have shorter board meetings, and the power can all go off.
There you go.
Just teasing. Just teasing.
So what have we cut out of our budget?
So then we would be taking $5,000 off of mills and $15,000 off of workshops.
So we've taken at least 20 grand out.
Yep.
And if I did my proposal to Kelly, then we could cut at least 2,000 out of video budget.
What's that?
.5%.
And my answer is, I'll do what the board votes on.
Oh, you're so cagey.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not uncomfortable at all with having that subtraction utilities, having seen the historical data. That's just a fudge number, so... When do we expect we might have an answer on insurance?
December.
Can you hit the mic?
There are a couple of meetings set up over the next couple of weeks. There's been some change with insurance from DPI versus going to the state. So there's some, like, uncertainties with that right now. There's some new legislation. I mean, we learned that at the North Carolina School Board Association Regional Meeting. There's some changes with flood insurance and insurance going from DPI back over to the state control. But right now, so Dan Collins, our risk manager, has a couple of meetings actually set up this week with some of his insurance contacts. But it may be three to four weeks before we really know about that.
So Kelly, how comfortable are you if we get within $30,000 to say, and finalize numbers down the road? I mean, we can vote on this, that we're within X amount of money and see what else may happen, even with software license renewals. So we can't really touch the leases because, but I don't know, Dane, if there's any opportunities in your department from local money to reduce any licensing?
What if we adopt this, the yellow is the part of the plan and then as things come available, maybe we can tweak the plan? And that gives you some flexibility to find where opportunities might lie as the year progresses?
I think what Ms. Furtinbaugh was referring to is I would like to go ahead and break out the board expense. I'd like for you to confirm that you're going to do the $15,000 and also the meals, right? The $5,000 for the meal and $15,000 for the workshop. So I'd like to go ahead and break that out and get you to confirm that.
Right.
And then there's really, you can probably push the envelope, $2,000 or $3,000 more on your workshop. If you, if you guys want to get tight, there's some things that you could probably do. But it, it would be tighter. So that's, that's an option for you to consider. But if we can break that out, Dane, can you break that out? Just copy that "I."
And we're not voting tonight, so you can do it later.
Okay.
Yeah. But yeah, bring those three "I" sections up as separate line items. And then we can yea or nay each one. It sounds like we don't want to remove the video recording, so then we'll be a little bit short in the total.
Okay. We can get as close as possible.
Yeah.
I mean, they can be less. Instead of four cameras, you have two or three.
Yeah. And I think everybody was updated, but we did previously have on reducing some expense with school resource officers and the city was not able to positively affect our reductions. So those will remain at the same expense they were. Okay, so you guys will update the spreadsheet. We'll have a gap in here, some amount of money. And like I said, each of the board budget items, then we can decide those individually. Okay, any other discussion on this item? Okay, so more to come this week. Please pay attention to your agenda when it comes out and the updates that may come through emails or get attached to agenda, depending on if it's completely ready for the meeting. So any other business tonight? I'll take a motion to adjourn. We'll do Mr. Walter and Mrs. Grimsley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll say goodnight to our viewing audience. Thank you for joining us. Goodnight.